How are you? I came back. I didn't, I didn't want enough of this. They have mail books up. I was on the hook. That wasn't enough to reach that.
Brown bagging. No, it's not here. Is there anything that has to do with art salary? How people bring their own up or walk down the street without. Or didn't they know the art? Obviously, all that.
Well, I tell you, being a very dear family thing.
What not being able to walk around with alcohol?
Yeah, I mean, for them and not getting the three things for wood. Yeah, I mean, they're all over laws and so we're prepared for that, that way. Yeah, the greater what they're used to.
We're one generation away from the children, I'm telling you.
Oh, yeah.
But why? We do have the Puritans to come. Yes. So we're one generation from the children. The Puritans, whichever one was more. Well, I'm sure the Puritans were the Puritans until the children. Okay. They did. Well, the ones that won was not there.
Talking about his, your kids. I saw my cousin's half a street from where he lives. His wife wasn't here, she went to school.
Arizona, under alcohol.
And half a street.
They went into the CBS, CBS, the better prices. That's what I'm talking about.
They could die.
We were trying to find. Where was this? In, uh, the Dallas?
Yeah.
I feel like nice one.
Dave's, my mother, first time. He was telling us yesterday, his mother called him first one day and said, "Just speak to Dave then, because you don't have that next kid." And he goes, "What about a father's eye?"
Yeah. He was trying to have the last place I'd get by. I was trying to be very sad or very.
I was watching Austin's team just break by the tunnel.
Oh, I'm sure.
Was that guy in race year?
When his daughter got married, he had a guy that I grew up with.
Yeah, actually saw their truck the other day breaking down. I'm here so far.
Really? Yeah. As they met and married, you tell me about it later.
They been, they been in this?
Last time we were at a place. I mean, all the big hunts were hung out.
I think they're at this Allen, which is safer.
That's not very often. It happens every all day.
Football house.
Wonderful.
To the park and that.
The first is promising to the people of United States.
Well, we just speak on our own.
Get back to me. I mean, I'm sorry. Uh, Claire and John were with us. Mine was. Uh, yeah. Yeah. How about those last one?
Nothing. I bet you.
Yeah, I see. You're different.
That was good stuff.
Yeah. As long as you're not making your butt.
I wouldn't do that idea.
Other two guys, you know.
Yes, this? I don't know. I mean, like, uh, when I hit five, I was like, okay, well, I'm doing this. That's fine.
No, um, some of the. For part of it, I wanted to talk.
I know, it was very good. I didn't know all the business. Did you know all of them?
You want to do it though? Right. It's right. It's right.
For birth and generation.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, July the 18th, regular meeting of the City Council. Would Patrick A. Bent of the Interquest Church of Alpharetta please do our invocation for us?
So let's just close our eyes for a moment. And as we close our eyes, we're just gonna let go of the day. So let's just take a nice deep breath and just breathe in a nice long breath. And then as we exhale, let's just let go of the day. Let's go, let go of the busyness and all that we've been taking care of. So we just breathe in and feel God's love filling us this night. And as God's love fills us all this night, Father, we ask a blessing upon this Milton City Council. We ask a blessing upon the city of Milton. And this night, as this council goes forth, we ask for clarity and understanding and wisdom for all that they are to discuss this evening. We ask a blessing upon them as they stand forth to serve this city. And then we ask a blessing upon the city of Milton that it continues to grow and blossom to be the unique city it is to be. We give thanks for this blessing, Father. And so it is. Amen.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July the 18th, 2011, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 18th, 2011, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood is absent unexcused. Mayor Protem Burke Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tart.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 11-147.
Are there any items to be considered?
No, certainly not at this time.
I'd add, just quickly, an executive session. Let me throw, well, let me throw all of them in there. Personnel litigation and land acquisition. We might only need a couple of those, but I'll throw them all out there.
Would anybody care to make a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda, adding an executive session for personnel litigation. Was it potential or does it really matter?
Personnel litigation or land acquisition.
Personnel litigation and land acquisition. The motion was made by Councilperson Longoria and I think by, uh, seconded by Councilperson Thurman.
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. The next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items in the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or council. Every citizen, each citizen who chooses to participate in a public comment must complete a public comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember that this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Are there any public comments?
We have one public comment regarding brown bagging. That's under first presentation.
Ken, is it okay for somebody to speak on that? Okay.
Yes, hi.
If you'll just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Megan Jamison. I live at 710 McCos Lane, Milton, Georgia 30004. I've been a business owner in Milton for the last four years and, as well as a Milton resident, and I am in favor of the amendment to the alcohol ordinance to include provisions to allow brown bagging. I believe that this will be good for small businesses, unique businesses within the Milton City limits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, will the city clerk please sound the items?
Our first item is approval of the June 6, 2011, regular minutes. Agenda item number 11148. Next is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Emergency Care Medical Group PC Russell Mitchell, M.D., to provide medical direction for the city's fire rescue department. Agenda item number 11149. Our third item is approval of changes to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Milton and city of Alpharetta for SWAT services. Agenda item number 11-150. Next is approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the provision of animal control services between Fulton County, Georgia and the city of Milton. Agenda item number 11-151. Our next item is approval of subdivision plats as follows. Kensington Farms subdivision combines lots 59 and 60, revision to final plat. Next, Union Primitive Baptist Church, combine two parcels into one, minor plat. George Jackson and others, reconfigure four lots into three lots, minor plat. Next, Jeb Rand, two plats, reconfigure three parcels into two parcels to provide proper access, minor plat. Last, Waterside Subdivision, create utility parcel to allow Atlanta Gas Company to install equipment, minor plat. This is agenda item number 11-152.
All right, do we have a motion in a second?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by Councilperson Luss and seconded by Councilperson Tart. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to reports and presentations, will the city clerk sound the next item?
Next item is a proclamation recognizing Hopewell Youth Association's 6U All-Star Outlaws Baseball Day. Agenda item number 11-153, presented by Mayor Protem Burke Hewitt.
All right, I think we've got a few folks from the team out there in the audience, I believe. So this is the Hopewell Youth Association's 6 and Under All-Star Outlaws Baseball Day. Whereas baseball, the truly great American pastime, which evolved from older bat and ball games dating back to the mid-18th century, is a sport that requires skillful hand-eye coordination, mental awareness, agility, grace, and teamwork. And whereas the Hopewell Youth Association, through its programs offered at Milton's Bell Memorial Park, has a tradition of excellence and accomplishment in athletics reflecting the highest ideals of hard work, training, and most importantly, sportsmanship. And whereas coaches Les Kikekendall, Scott Mcmickle, Mike Rickheim, and Kirk Driscoll volunteered to lead the 2011 Spring 6 and Under Outlaws, an all-star team whose home field is in the city of Milton. And whereas the 6 and Under Outlaws represented the Hopewell Youth Association and the city of Milton locally, regionally, and at the state level, posting an unprecedented string of successful, success, and ultimately ending the season undefeated, winning 18 consecutive games, which culminated in the USSSA Georgia State Championship. And whereas the team was comprised of many young, talented, and spirited players who learned about life, sporting skills, both on and off the field because of this experience. And whereas Tripp Baron, Jack Davis, Knox Driscoll, Elliot Kikekendall, Benny Lorenzo, Caleb Mcmickle, Matt Paulus, Jack Rickheim, Alec Ritter, Andrew Sherman, Carter Wallace, and Hugh Weston collectively as a team represent the best the state has to offer at the level of their play. And whereas the players on the 6 and Under Outlaws baseball team are all champions, not only on the field, but in the classroom, in the community, and in life, and we are proud this great team is located in Milton, Georgia. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton hereby dedicate Monday, July the 18th, 2011, as Hopewell Youth Association 6 and Under All-Star Outlaws Baseball Day in the city of Milton, Georgia, and encourage all community members to congratulate this fine team, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this day, the 18th, on this 18th day of July, 2011. So if the, if the players and coaches will come up to the front podium there, we'll hand out these proclamations, and then we'll get the council members, and we'll try to see if we can squeeze in a photograph of everybody.
I want to squeak your chair.
Guys, if we could do, give that end, this end right. They feel perfect. Everybody could do that.
I mean, giving these things for a good day. You got a lot to do. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Today, so we are so much different.
I thought you had five, and I was trying to shake your hand.
Yeah.
There you go, buddy. Congratulations. There you go.
Thank you.
These are your clothes.
Yeah, and your clothes. There you go. You got your parking license.
Okay.
I was starting like that.
These are your clothes.
Yeah, and your clothes. There you go.
You got it.
Yeah.
You're pretty tough. Yeah.
Those are bad, man.
Do you have the phone?
Well, it started like that.
These are your clothes.
Yeah, and your clothes. There you go.
You got your parking license.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna count to three, so everybody open your eyes. It's not worth picking three, okay? One, two, three. Let me get another one. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Now, there won't be anybody here.
I'm sure they're gonna stay.
I did a pretty good job of reading that, didn't I?
You sure did. Oh, my God.
Did you, did you, like, get somebody to help you with those names before?
I did. I had to phonetically spell it.
I had to butchered all those names.
Is this great and not working today?
The worst was when we had the, uh, some golf team from a foreign country that came and played.
Oh.
That was a rough one.
You said this one real fast.
Kikekendall.
Yeah.
Kikekendall.
Kikekendall.
I'm gonna miss that one.
And then, as quickly as they show up.
We thought y'all might stay for the whole meeting.
It's only gonna be three hours.
This little guy's not like, switching heads. One, two, back.
I don't know why.
It could be that you show up late.
Oh, is that what that is?
While they're, while they're leaving, I think, somebody told me that the closest that team came to a loss was like 12 or 13 run difference. Is that right? Did I say that?
One, three, twelve.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
Is that the coach pitch, or what is it?
It is.
What it would be to be six again, you know? That's a good time to watch.
And of course, the snack afterwards is a very important part of the, of the game.
It's all about what you get, ask you when.
It's all about.
All right, well, moving on to first presentation, will the city clerk please sound the items?
First item is abandonment of public right-of-way on Roxbury Row. Agenda item number 11155, Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, mayor and council. This application that we're reviewing tonight was submitted by the Roxbury Row subdivision. They are located on the north side of Francis Road. They're a nine-lot subdivision, and have requested abandonment and privatization of their road for the purposes of gating the subdivision. Staff has reviewed this application in accordance with Chapter 48 of our city code and also in accordance with Title 32, Chapter 7 of the state code for compliance with our rules and regulations in accordance with abandonment and privatization of these roads. Staff has found that the application is in compliance with both of those ordinances. In addition, in reviewing this application, we looked at the potential of interconnection with this road for future use and didn't find that there was any reasonable expectation of being able to make that connection in the future. So with, staff is recommending approval of the abandonment of the right-of-way for the purposes of gating the subdivision and the Roxbury Estates subdivision. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
First, is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir, there is neither any support or opposed.
Okay, does anybody up here have any questions for Mr. Lucas? Bill, go ahead.
How many residents?
It's a nine-lot subdivision.
When you said they presented the petition to the city, was it an HOA or was it just the residents itself?
It was filed by the HOA on behalf of the residents, with 100% of the residents filing in favor of the abandonment.
Okay. Anybody else having, Councilperson Ben?
Thank you, sir. With regards to the process that we've been talking about, how does this compare to those things that we've been discussing? Is it similar to? Is it inclusive of all of the items that you're considering and contemplating in terms of how we proceed in the change of or modifications of our policies? Is it about the same? I'm just kind of getting the sense of, would there have been any other components, such as value of roadway, those sorts of things that we talked about?
From those types of issues, it's exactly the same as what's being proposed. Probably the only step in the process that we'll be looking at coming up would be the addition of an initial meeting that we didn't really cover during this, but in most other respects, the process would be exactly the same.
Okay. And when you mentioned, Carter, just about the interconnectivity, I'm assuming that you looked at what was the potential of that subdivision eventually having another development either at the back or somehow adjacent to?
Yes, ma'am, or the potential to connecting to existing roads. In both of those cases, there was no reasonable expectation that that would be, that would be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other further questions or discussion?
I want to add very quickly a comment that we were debating, just to get you sort of ready for an issue as we explore any other, other deeds, which I don't know that we will in the near future, but the law anticipates that when we abandon, the property actually goes back, the road that goes back to the contiguous property owners. Sort of like the road adjacent to a parcel now collapses to the middle line, and now they own it. So that's what our deed here reflects, is sort of a conveyance to these individual property owners. This involves nine. So just, just be ready when it involves 200 or 300 or 400 homes, particularly from the standpoint of, you know, where do they want this right-of-way to go? Probably to the HOA, right? A lot of times, that's where they're gonna want it to go. That's not where it's gonna go from the city. It's gonna go to the property owners, which is what's allowed for in the statute, and then they're gonna have to deal with getting it to the HOA. So that may be another conveyance. I just wanted to let y'all know that, right? To convey it out of their name back to the HOA. So I just, I throw that out to you because it's something that Carter and our office were sort of grappling with, and it's an issue, but, you know.
And we don't facilitate that.
We could, we could facilitate it, but the more cautious approach is to follow the statute. Certainly, we have debated, well, what would be the harm of sending it directly to the HOA? That's where everyone wants it to go anyway, right? They want it to go to the HOA, a common ownership. That's not what the statute says, though, and that's the problem. So we're trying to adhere to the statute, but just be mindful that that could be a little procedurally clunky in the future.
So, Ken, am I wrong to assume that it gets conveyed to the city or to the county, depending on when this all occurred? It actually comes from the developer, because the developer originally owns the road. Property owners never owned the road. And so, and the HOA takes over from the developer. At some point in time in the developer's life, he realizes that the, the property is built out enough that he can let the HOA take over. There is a legal process that takes place where the, the developer gives over his rights to the HOA. And now that, those roads would be property to the HOA before they're provided back to the city or the county or to whoever.
If that was the case, that'd be easy, but, but what the statute anticipated is, is that the contiguous property owners goes to the middle line, and by this time, that's who that is. You're, you're addressing the very point that I'm getting to, though, is that that's gonna become a little bit of a problem, and we'll probably have to work good with Carter on a process, because no, none of these property owners want to have this property.
Right.
All it is for them is an additional tax burden, and, and all it is is property encumbered, quite frankly, with access easement. That's what it's encumbered by, because you can't shut the road down. It's still gonna be a private road. So I just rolled it out there to you to say, to Councilmember Tart's point, yeah, we can probably help facilitate getting it where it needs to be, but the first step is we're gonna get it right into the statute, and then we'll have to get it where it needs to be after that, and maybe just a series of quitclaim deeds, or maybe a master quitclaim deed from the property owners to the HOAs.
So is, is each property owner responsible then for creating the new limits of that property and filing, filing a deed amendment?
No, no, there, there, nothing really is gonna be required. As an operation of law, once we abandon it, it will go back to them. Now, ostensibly, they may have a right and obligation for maintenance and upkeep, because they have to maintain and upkeep their neighbor's easement, right? Because crossing through that is how the neighbor gets to their property on the other side of that. That's why, again, this makes no sense to be in 100 or 200 individual little blocks of right-of-way. That makes zero sense. So we're gonna have to figure out and be creative. And all jurisdictions are dealing with now, because obviously the rationale for abandonment's gotten a lot more lax, right? Now it all has to serve as the public interest. It made a whole lot of sense when you're talking about nine properties. That makes a whole lot of sense. When you're talking about 200 or 300 properties, it's just a little more, it's just a little more cumbersome. I just want to alert you to that fact.
Yeah.
and by this time, that's who that is. You're, you're addressing the very point that I'm getting to, though, is that that's gonna become a little bit of a problem, and we'll probably have to work good with Carter on a process, because no, none of these property owners want to have this property.
Right.
All it is for them is an additional tax burden, and, and, and all it is is property encumbered, quite frankly, with access easement. That's what it's encumbered by, because you can't shut the road down, it's still gonna be a private road. So I just roll that out there to you to say, to Councilmember Tarp's point, yeah, we can probably help facilitate getting it where it needs to be, but the first step is we're gonna get it right under the statute, and then we'll have to get it where it needs to be after that, and maybe just a series of quick claim deeds, or maybe a master quick claim deed from the property owners to the HOAs.
So is, is each property owner, uh, responsible then for creating the new, uh, limits of that property and filing, filing a deed amendment?
No, no, there, there, nothing really is gonna be required. As an operation of law, once we abandon it, it will go back to them. Uh, now ostensibly, they may have a, a right and obligation for maintenance and upkeep, because they have to maintain and upkeep their neighbor's easement, right? Because crossing through that is how the neighbor gets to their property on the other side of that. That's why, again, this makes no sense to be in 100 or 200 individual little blocks of right-of-way. That makes zero sense. So we're gonna have to figure out and be creative. And, and all jurisdictions are dealing with now, because obviously the, the rationale for abandonment's gotten a lot more lax, right? Now it all has to serve as the public interest. It made a whole lot of sense when you're talking about nine properties. That makes a whole lot of sense. When you're talking about two or 300 properties, it's just a little more, it's just a little more cumbersome. I just want to alert you to that fact, so if you hear us grappling with this, that's why.
Well, in existing gated communities, then, how are the, uh, how are the lots described legally?
By reference to a plat, that's probably how it's gonna be done, because obviously there's, there weren't bona fide legal descriptions that were done to, 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 to make this conveyance. They were done by way of the eight, the, the developer tendering a final plat that reflected that the public right of, or the right-of-way was gonna be dedicated, and then we accepted it by way of our maintenance of that right-of-way. So the only legal description is gonna be in the final plat. Carter, does that sound about right?
That's right. We'll, we'll do a revision to the existing final plat indicated as a private road, private access easement.
So we won't get as in the weeds as what you're talking about with legal, we're not gonna go there.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. Um, you just, thank you for that, but it, it does bring a few questions to mind. Um, the cost of conveyance, it sounds like we as a city, through our city attorney, is handling that. What is the cost of conveyance in that first step?
You know, quite frankly, the, the, from the standpoint of legal fees, to get us to this step has been very, very small. I mean, Carter's provided us just a little bit of information, uh, one of the attorneys in my office reviewed it. So this step is, is, is really cheap. When you get into whether or not we have to help facilitate getting to the HOA, that might be a little more money. I mean, that would be a matter of identifying all the requisite property owners and helping them draft the, the deeds needed to do that. Now, once we get the first one done, I could probably turn it over to staff, and they could take care of the rest of them. So we'll get better at this process as we do it more often. Um, not to say we're not good at it now, but I'm just saying if we do any of these on a large scale, it'll probably take one or two before we get really good at it. I don't think it'll be exorbitantly expensive at all, but I'm thinking maybe $5,000.
And I guess my point is that the cost of conveyance is another, it's, there may be a cost for legal fee through your office, but also there's the internal cost, obviously, for our staff. So my question is, how are we handling it? Is the, um, requestor of this petition, are they covering the cost of conveyance? Or is effectively the city covering the cost? It seems to me that we would want to have that be cost neutral for citizens.
Yeah, we should pass that on.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the HOA that's requesting it and/or, I don't know, it, it just seems to me that that should be part of our equation. Um, we had also talked in the past about the value of the road, that obviously that's gonna be conveyed back to those property owners. Um, and, and in past abandements, there was discussion about what is the value of that actual dirt? Um, I haven't heard that yet here this evening. I don't know, Carter, if, if you can mention that. I realize it varies situation to situation, but I would hope that that's one of the elements that we've looked at in this.
Typically, typically, councilmember, if we condemned it, then we are, we have to get a price for it that is no less than what we paid for it. But so often, the case is, we didn't pay a nickel for it, but it was conveyed by way of the dedication, which I think this is exactly that in that situation. So we don't charge anything for it, because quite frankly, all it's doing is giving up a long-term maintenance obligation on the part of the city. So if anything, the taxpayers are, are deriving a benefit. Uh, you know, you don't know whether the individuals accessing the road are, but the taxpayers are deriving a benefit. But here, there's no obligation, we, we receive a penny for it.
It's gonna be different in the past, and we've had one that was a road that was accessed by the public, and it was abandoned, like in Fulton County, and there was a conveyance of value because the community was giving up value, and so that there had to be an exchange of value. So I just, again, as we explore these, I, I, I know that each one is individually, uh, different.
Fact, fact, that's right.
Is that, is that a good example, truly, or is, uh, I guess what I got from what you said is if we purchased a road?
If we condemned it, for instance.
Well, but there's, as an example, there was one in Fulton County that was not condemned, but the developer wanted to abandon it because they wanted to replace it with a different road. Um, and the citizen's viewpoint was, gee, that's a road that the public had been utilizing, and so it, rather than Fulton County just to gift it, I mean, there was an, an exchange of value. Um, and so, and I, I, I think Chris mentioned a couple of weeks ago, you know, being in the habit of just giving away the assets of the city, is, it's a tough position for staff to be in. So as we look at this globally, I think the issue was, what are all of the components of the math? And one component of math that I just heard that we hadn't talked about before is the cost of conveyance, legal fees as well as staff fees. The other is just value of roadway. In some cases, it sounds like there would be a value or an exchange of value, in other cases, there might not be. Um, I'm just suggesting that those would be components of the analysis in this and in others that, that we would need to, um, assess. Um, but, so I don't know where that puts us this evening, but those are a couple of questions I have. Um, just so that I can get them out there, 'cause this may all tie to a response, Carter, for you. Um, liability, I know we've talked about in the past, the liability that right now the city bears, but when this goes to kind of a two-step, the, the conveyance to the property owner, what does that do for them in terms of bearing that liability? 'Cause I, and, and there's a time difference between when the HOA takes it over from a liability perspective and when the individual property owner does.
Well, obviously, it complicates it, but, but it, from the city's perspective, it's, it's easy. Um, it's an asset we no longer own, so to the extent that there is a accident or some sort of a claim, God forbid, we don't want that, but if there is, and I don't mean to say this cynically, but one pocket that won't be looked at is ours.
So we, we have no more liability in this convey, there's no timing difference, et cetera. The other with regards to stormwater, um, I know a number of years ago, we had an issue with that, and we talked about how we would handle it in these kinds of situations. Um, Ken, I think your office was involved in that as well. How do we handle that in this case, and sometimes the stormwater that the city has responsibility for may be beyond the roadway? How was that impacted with this?
The, um, general, in general, the stormwater's gonna be the responsibility of the subdivision itself. Uh, we have a responsibility under our NPDS permit to inspect those facilities to ensure that they're operational in accordance with the permit that was granted with, to the subdivision initially. But, um, overall maintenance of the stormwater system is going to belong to the, uh, subdivision.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, I have a follow-on to that, because having just gotten out of the Excellence in Utilities seminar at the GMA, uh, we don't currently have a stormwater utility defined for the city, do we?
That's correct.
Have we been looking into that?
We have not. Generally, the stormwater utility, once we develop a capital list that really exceeds our ability to, um, to pay for those either through capital programs or a general fund, uh, we would begin to look at other alternatives to funding that, one of those being the utility. So as we develop and as we get through our inspection and inventory of the existing system we have, and can develop that capital list, that will really kind of generate and dictate how we go forward with funding alternatives.
All right. Well, um, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on agenda item 11-155. And we'll, uh, be hearing it here in just about 20 seconds, again. If anybody comes up with any questions, um, we can ask them then. Um, there are no items on the zoning agenda or under unfinished business. Moving on to the new business, will the clerk sound the next item, please?
Approval of a resolution to abandon public right-of-way on Roxbury Row, agenda item number 11-155. Public hearing was held today, July 18th. Mr. Carter Lucas.
I think Carter, I mean, not, he's...
I can go through it all again if you'd like.
Made his presentation, so, uh, would you like to hear it again?
What does this have to do with?
Do we want to, uh, have we got any other questions or comments, or are we ready to move?
Mayor Perdino, I'll make a, a motion.
All right, let's go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Perdino, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 11-155, um, a resolution to abandon public right-of-way of Roxbury Row.
Second motion.
All right, we've got a, uh, we've got, uh, kind of a motion on the table to approve a resolution to abandon public right-of-way on Roxbury Row, agenda item 11-155, made by Alan Tarp and seconded by Councilperson Lusk. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, will the clerk please sign it?
Approval of a resolution regarding agreement with Fulton County for participation in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Developments, HUD Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG and Home Programs for federal fiscal years 2012, 2013, and 2014. This is agenda item number 11-156. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this is a continuation of a consortium that we're a part of currently. This would reaffirm our three-year commitment to remain part of that consortium for the purpose of securing funds or programs, should they become available through the, the CDVG program. Um, one of the reasons why this consortium is our recommendation for us to continue to be a part of is we simply don't have a population large enough to go out on our own. So this allows us access potentially to these funds where if we otherwise, um, decided we didn't want to be a part of this consortium, our size just simply would preclude us from gaining access to these resources. Not that many of these resources are available to us, um, because of, uh, a host of statistical things that you put in the hopper and figure out what you're eligible for, uh, but I'd rather not close the door on it entirely, especially over the next three years. So this is, uh, just to reaffirm our commitment to the consortium. You happy to answer any questions?
Are there any questions, Karen?
Just one, it looks like this is pretty much a standard agreement for all cities in Fulton County that aren't going out on their own.
That's correct.
So it's no, nothing that we really need to spend much time on.
Uh, no, and this has been through Ken's office for review, uh, but, uh, not, it, it is a standard, uh, it's a fairly standard, straightforward agreement.
And there's no cost for participation, correct?
There's no.
Just opportunity for grants?
Any further questions? Is there a motion in a second?
I have a motion. I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number 11-156.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to approve agenda item number 11-156, uh, made by Councilperson Zonner Bailey, seconded by Councilperson Longoria. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passed unanimously. Uh, moving on to mayor and council reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak on this evening? All right, staff reports, Chris, y'all got anything?
Uh, just a couple of, a couple of things. One, I would, uh, not be doing my job if I didn't, uh, say thanks to Lynn for her service to the City of Milton. This is Lynn's last meeting.
You can still change your mind.
With us. I tried that this morning, um, and I tried that yesterday. I tried to sabotage the pictures of her house when they were, she, they were being staged for a real estate agent. I mean, I pulled out as many stops as I can pull out. So far, it hasn't, uh, hasn't worked, but uh, we're encouraged that Lynn is moving to a place that's good for her and her professional career and her family, um, so. Very, but will be missed, I can, I can definitely assure you that. You might have seen the newspaper article over the weekend with respect to Providence Park. Um, yeah, I don't want to go too much into it, but, uh, which is draw your attention to the email I sent the newspaper article. Um, you know, frankly, I just think the commissioner has it wrong, and so I don't know how to say that, other than to say I think the commissioner has it wrong. And, uh, we look forward over the next 18 months to, uh, firmly standing rooted to where we believe we have been and where we think we will go in the future.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Just in terms of timing, in terms of when that, um, obviously longstanding turnover date is, is it, is 2012 still a solid date in terms of the environmental cleanup?
It's the best date we have today.
Thank you.
It has not changed. I want to let you know we're in full swing with the budget. Um, fiscal year 12 is upon us. Um, the department heads, as well as departments, are working towards meeting several deadlines. Um, I want to let you know that, uh, our thought at this point, and I think you probably have been notified about this, um, and if not, there's still plenty of time to notify you, we'd like to do a budget workshop that fourth Monday in August for grace for the five Monday month. Um, and, uh, would like to do that on the fourth Monday in August, if that presents a, um, what?
So we get an extra Monday, and you're gonna take it away from us? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, you still get a fifth one, so you still get a month.
Oh, okay, I see. There's no, there's no uptick in Mondays.
No, we just happen to have five of them in August, because it starts on the first, so...
And Sudi did, she sent us an email last week.
Look forward to getting that in front of you. We'll have some, um, good things to, to look at this year. We'll also have some challenges, I'm sure, to close the gap on. I don't know what those look like yet, but anytime you go through a budget, Stacey, this morning, Steph, I mean, I haven't had my, uh, moment yet where I go, oh, gosh, how am I gonna get this thing balanced? Um, it'll happen. I need to go ahead and have it so that I can start to lose sleep. And miraculously, we, uh, tighten it up and, and always come up with a decent plan. So just look forward to that being a good bit of work as we move into the next couple of months. Is there anything I can owe you an answer on, or any questions that you have on any particular topic that might be going on in Milton? All right, fair enough. I do have a couple of items for executives.
Okay, well, with that, um, is there a motion in a second to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel litigation and land acquisition?
Second.
We had, uh, a motion by Councilperson Longoria, seconded by Councilperson Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
This'll be really quick.